Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the request to appoint the county assessor position.
Second.
Motion is second and for discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. One thing I do want to remember on the comment on Senator Chen, this question Minnesota's steam trust reunion donated fifteen hundred dollars.
Thank you. Donated fifteen hundred dollars to the, for the sheriff's work that was done out of the steam trust just, I thank them very much for that donation. That would go into approval of the payment of bills and vouchers?
I would say move.
Got a motion to approve the bills and vouchers?
I'll second that.
We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Next thing we've got is approval of the minutes from September twenty-sixth.
Of approval.
We got approval for?
Second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Second for approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, we skipped over citizens to be heard.
We sure did. Okay. Are there any citizens to be heard that are not on the agenda? You have anybody online?
I don't, Mr. Chair.
That's why I skipped over it. No one. Okay, this morning, we want to talk about the flu shots, which we, which we did before the meeting, but I'd like to have a few comments from Kathy concerning flu shots. Anyway, I guess if there's anybody around that wants a flu shot, she's got some extra. Since she was giving them in the buttocks this morning, we wanted to do it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As we do every year, we, we recommend everyone getting the flu shot. It's a way to prevent the influenza, which is a respiratory disease, and it's important to note that, you know, we have, we have that circulating every year, so they create the vaccine that is tailored to the virus, the worst strain that's out there. So we recommend to everyone, if you're high risk for sure, to get the flu vaccine. It is provided through Public Health on both sides of the river, and of course, our healthcare systems are providing flu vaccine as well. Anything you want to add, Cheryl?
Just have to be six months or older, and I think everyone here qualifies for that category, that requirement.
We've had some community groups that always request that Cheryl comes out and provides the vaccine to those groups, so she's done that and still has others to provide the vaccine to, so it's all about prevention, so you don't want to end up with influenza, or influenza disease with the complications that can, that can occur with that.
I was just going to add, we just started our senior flu clinic, so went out to roll log yesterday and did a number of those, so we try to, try to hit those areas where healthcare might be a little bit more difficult for people to get to, so we bring it to their meeting or their monthly lunch and whatever, so that we can try and vaccinate as many as possible.
Okay, appreciate you guys doing that.
Thank you.
I hope everybody in the county does get their flu shots.
Yes.
Yes.
So, can you tell me, or tell the audience how they would go, do they, can they make an appointment with Public Health, and if so, what would they need to bring with them?
Absolutely make an appointment by calling two one eight, two nine nine, seven seven, seven seven, and it's option two, to schedule an appointment in our clinic, and you just need your insurance card or your Medicare card.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. With that, we'll go up to our updates from our representative Jim Joy and Senator Robert Cubic, Bob Cubic, I guess it is, or whatever, Rob, I guess you go by. Okay, we'll get it straight yet. Excuse me. Now, if you just want to give us a little bit of a run day, rundown of what's happened this year, or what's, what's going to happen, or short?
Sure, how long do we have?
You got it, take what you need.
I mean, it, uh...
Twenty minutes.
I could just sit here and rattle off a list. Um, yeah, obviously, it was a big legislative year, there were a lot of things passed, there was a lot of money moved, I think the counties, at least by my assessment, fair, fairly well. There was an increase in county aid from the state, I can rattle off just a few other things. Local road and infrastructure, local bridge repair, got a lot of money in the transportation and in the bonding bill, they made a few changes for cities under five thousand are now eligible for some of the same transportation funding that townships have, so they'll be able to get some funding, dedicated funding for roads, so that's a new thing. We spent, yeah.
Much funding is available for them, is there a limit to what they can get there?
Yeah, it's, it's the same, it basically set up, just like the townships, it's a certain percentage, and then, and obviously, it's based on your population, too, so.
That'll help some of the small towns on, you know?
It will, for sure. Childcare was a big priority, so there was a lot of money spent on childcare, which is most, you know, people have identified, at least as a workforce problem, of getting, you know, childcare, particularly in rural areas, it's a huge problem. The governor had a big emphasis on, you know, families and children, and so that was a lot, a lot of money was spent on that. We got some money for public safety, that was money that was going to come the year before and didn't, so we increased that money, too. We got some increase in the SCORE funding, so we did a reduction in the solid waste tax, too, we brought that down, that's the first time in about ten years that's been done. Duty disability, which has been a big concern for a lot of smaller communities and for the counties, for particularly those law enforcement officers who might have PTSD, and in some cases, if they went out on disability at a very young age, could eat up a huge chunk of, you know, local municipalities' budget, so we made some adjustments there. PTSD, you know, in many cases can be treated, so they're putting some options there for a treatment before they would go on any kind of long-term disability, so that, I know it was a big concern of a lot of smaller towns, places like Dilworth, that could eat up their entire, you know, city budget if they had to put out an officer on long-term disability at a very young age. Obviously, cannabis was one of the things that got a lot of attention at the legislature this year. When the bill came up, it really did not have any funding for local municipalities, they're going to have a, an expense with this, so there, we made sure, there was a group of us that kind of worked together to make sure that some of that money from the tax on cannabis goes to local governments, because they will have, you know, they'll have expenses in terms of putting out licenses and just overseeing the program, so we made sure we got some money there. There are probably going to be still, you know, some local control issues, I think, that need to be flushed out a little bit, I think there's some concern, and I share those, that, you know, local municipalities need to make sure they need to have a little bit more control over how that program's administered. You know, things, looking forward ahead here, looking ahead probably for this next year, we did a temporary elimination of the county cost for civil committed individuals, and it's only for the next two-year biennium. We probably, we're going to need to find some kind of a long-term funding for that, so we covered the next two years, but I think that's something certainly this year, and certainly as we go into the next biennium, that we're going to have to look at, finding ways to make that a long-term coverage of that funding. There's the, there's a task force that was developed for the forty-eight hour rule for civil commitments, or commitments, or, you know, people who have mental cases going on to the state, if there's open beds, it kind of, we had kind of prioritized those people coming out of the county corrections. There was a lawsuit about that, because there are people who are trying to get into those mental facilities from the general public, and they felt like the, the prison system had the direct pipeline and they didn't have access to it. It's been kind of a long contentious issue, so there's a task force on that that is going to work together. It's the first time, really, they've gotten the Attorney General's Office and the Department of Human Services together, so they'll be working on that, so that'll be one of the things we'll be looking at, I think, go into the next year. And then I know one of the other, you know, concerns, too, we have, is the rural water district that's trying to be formed up in the northern part of the county, there was, you know, attempt to get a little bonding money for that, and I think that we're going to do some more bonding this year, and that'll be one of the things, at least in Clay County, too, that we'll be looking on a county level, for particularly those Georgetown and north that have a lot of water issues, and it's a good way we can tap into that rural water district from North Dakota, it'll be good for those communities. So is there a few of the greatest hits? I'll let Jim have his now.
Thank you. I echo what Senator Cubic said here, what took off place this year. One of the things that I guess, that I look at is, you know, I love local control, I sit on state and local and taxes, and taxes is one of the things that's concerning me, coming down the pipeline, as we look across the bridge and see North Dakota, our personal income tax, I, I'm going to, next year, keep working on to reduce personal income tax. We also need to look at, like, paid family coming through the thing, what it's going to cost taxpayers. It's a, it's a shared deal coming with four hundred new employees, it's a point seven and a point seven shared by the employer and the employee. I am feared with some of those, you know, if it costs you guys two, three hundred thousand dollars, that's going to be implemented through your budgets to the taxpayers. Some of these are what I'm worried about for our rural areas, and everywhere in Minnesota is people staying in their homes when the taxes continue going up. You know, I've had a lot of calls this week, just in Holly, we had a referendum that passed for a school, and taxes are starting to hit, and people are seeing it, and they're, you know, the whole tax budgets are coming out, and they're seeing their escrows be reevaluated because of tax and home insurance, and people are like, well, Jim, I'm retired and I'm going to have to move out of my house, I can't keep my house. You know, that's, that's what I worry about, sitting on the tax side of it, is that we're going to continue pushing people out of their homes, and, you know, we did come to a last-minute thing to fund nursing homes by three hundred million dollars, I hope we continue funding nursing homes, because people want to keep them open in their communities, don't want to move out of their rural areas, and local control is a big thing for me, of course, being a mayor, that's, you know, being my background, I think we need to, when we do legislation, make sure we keep it in your guys' hands, keep it in the local. The other thing I'm going to be working on is, I've been starting to work on is nine-one-one fees, nine-one-one fees, everybody's familiar with them, we pay eighty-four cents a line in Minnesota, there's three point six million people in Minnesota, I just got the report back from Department of Revenue, if you, if I was being conservative, I took, say there's only three million people in Minnesota that have cellphones, you take that by the eighty-four cents, by twelve months, it's thirty million a year, they came back and said we get seven million dollars a year, I got to figure out where that number comes from, I haven't, the reports are very vague of what I'm getting, so that's one thing I'm going to work on, because I think, I want to make sure all our nine-one-one fees are going to public safety. You know, I mean, I know there might have been language wrote on how it should be, but it should be public safety, that's, if I have a cellphone and I call nine-one-one. And the reason why I started exploring this, one of the things I asked is, my cellphone number, seven oh one, starts with seven oh one, I want to make sure that money's coming to where it's used in Minnesota, so that's one of the things I'm going to rearhead and hopefully can get more answers when we get back down to St. Paul. There's a gas tax increase coming, so we're going to see an increase on that, those are just some of the things I worry about with our bordering thing, I think we got to fight, be more competitive with North Dakota, to keep people over here and keep, you know, these going on, and when we continue to do gas tax increase, when North Dakota is dropping taxes. Local sales tax, tax option, you know, you people can propose that, cities can take it to a vote. Now, in order to do it, starting next year, will be a study group that'll study to make sure it's the right move, again, taking local power away, so. Other than that, it was, it was a very busy session, busy year, and a lot of new money going out, I hope we can keep up with what the increase was, and there was social security, you know, we did, there is social security that got let go for retired people capped at seventy-five, I wish it would have been for everybody, but it's a start, so. Other than that, next year will be another session, and we'll see where we're at, so thank you for having me today.
Here we got some questions, Kevin?
Thank you, I'm going to touch on, on three topics, I think, between the two of you, you both talked about, I'm going to start with the water district, you know, just, I don't know if you're familiar with Senator, but Clay County did adopt part of our, our area to include all of Clay County, with the exception of Moorhead and Dilworth, because of their, you know, they already have, you know, I, Moorhead could potentially be a source for future, but just so you're aware of that, and, and, you know, I know right now, the focus is, I think the current bonding is for, like Georgetown, and I believe Eulyn or Felton?
Felton.
Felton, Felton, and, but one of the things, Commissioner Gross and I serve on, on the three-county entity that's forming this, and, and one of the things that we're hearing is that once this thing starts, and people find out how good it is, it's a, it's a fast-moving, we're learning from North Dakota, I mean, most of North Dakota is on rural water now, and they're, and they're all using it, and so I just, I, you know, I think there's going to be some real opportunities there for, when you look at the, the maps that we have, and there's an awful lot of arsenic in the waters in, in Clay County, and it, and it isn't just in our northern eight township, throughout, throughout the county, so, and then the, then the, so I'm, I appreciate your work on, on anything you can do to assist us there. Then on the, I just want to touch on the SCORE funding, it's been a deal for a long time, and, you know, I, when they refer to something as a solid waste management tax, I, it should be to manage solid waste, and right now, an awful lot is going into the general fund, and I, I, we certainly appreciate the fact that there was a change, and we got a little bit more money back, I think, Clay County, what did we get back, Steve, this year?
About thirty-six thousand.
About thirty-six thousand, if, if the full amount would be there, we would see a double in our, our SCORE funding, which then goes to help offset Moorhead and Holly and all these other communities to help with their recycling services that they provide. And then on the nine-one-one fees, the nine-one-one fees, it's, to me, it's the same type of deal, and Representative Joy, you touched on a little bit, you know, they charge us eighty-five cents for nine, nine-one-one services, you would think that that would go to, to, for that, I don't know to what, I know, I know you're, Representative Joy, you're familiar with this, because you were, you're with your work with Holly, the city of Holly before, but, so, in our Clay County, through the Triple RDC, which is the Red River Regional Dispatch, we end up having to pay for a significant portion of that, and I think More, and Moorhead, I think, is around nine hundred thousand, more than?
It's a little over a million.
Little over a million dollars a year, the small cities are all, and they're, they all pay that, and, you know, we get, we hear from them saying, well, we're being double taxed, well, if, if it's really being double taxed, we're being triple taxed, you know, because of the, the money that we're paying in these, now, I, I certainly understand for a while there, that, that a lot of those fees went to build the armor system, I, so I can fully understand where a lot of that money went for that purpose. I think a lot of that is done now, I think, well, probably they're going into a next generation now.
Next generation nine-one-one, and the transition of the equipment. Armor hit within a two, three-year period. Consoles were purchased, and which are incredibly expensive, radios and portable radios were purchased. Everything is running out of warranty time now. The rural districts are struggling to make transition to new equipment, that needs to be subsidized. Changing out consoles is a, is a, is a tall order, there needs to be funding available, and as Representative Joy pointed out, we, we are partnered with North Dakota, they get fifteen, or they get a dollar fifty in Cass County, they voted to increase their nine-one-one fee. All of that money goes to Cass County, and they basically pay their operational funds with that. Everything else is, anything they put on the levy is for expansion or improvement. We've got to put everything on the levy, and we've got to, we've got to collect from our rural cities, and if the money that is being paid into this fund is what it should be, they should be able to subsidize these things for our PSAPs, our, our dispatch centers.
Yeah, no, that's fine, no, you're more familiar with it than I am, but you're, but I, but I do think that there needs to be some research done on that, I, I've been asking the question, just, you know, Representative Joy, you, you brought up, okay, well, how many people in the state are paying this, I'm thinking, how many people in Clay County are paying this? And, and obviously, you never get one-for-one money back, sometimes you get more back, and sometimes you get less back, but, but if, you know, if we're, you know, I don't know what, the, what's the dollar, do we get like four hundred thousand? Sheriff?
Back from the state?
Back from the state.
Just over three hundred thousand.
Little over three hundred thousand back from the state on an annual basis, and I, you know, I mean, for starters, I'd just like to see what that compares to for what goes out of Clay County, that, into that eighty-five cents per, per cellphone user on a monthly basis.
One of the questions I ask Commissioner Campbell is, right now, I'm starting to get the, I want to know what the total state comes, and then, of course, I will go to the county level, and then I want to know what each county gets, you know, because I got Becker Counties and I have Clay Counties.
Right.
And Becker County gets a little more than Clay County, but I, I, again, I'm a numbers guy, been in numbers my whole life, and I want to understand that when they say we get seven million a year, is what the report shows that I got, and I calculated out by just taking three point six million people, and I see six hundred thousand people don't have cellphone nowadays, but most kids on, at least ten years old or older have a cellphone, so there's probably five lines being paid out of house, or whatever it is, you know, it comes to about thirty million, and I just want to know the total, how we collect that, how we track it from these, these cellphone providers, whether it's prepaid, whether it's Verizon, whoever it is, and as people moving to Minnesota, I deal with a lot of different salespeople, their phone numbers are four oh six numbers, whatever, you know, different numbers, not even from Minnesota, I just want to make sure that we're getting our money, and that then, from there, I want to know what goes to the county, and then I want to know what it gets used for, because I, I wholeheartedly believe it should be all for public safety, and, and it, your county money should come back to you for your public safety, there, there shouldn't be any the state holds on to, unless we're doing a big upgrade like the armor and stuff, but I feel if you got your full eighty-four cents, you guys could probably fund your own stuff in your county, so.
Well, I, I just appreciate anything, you know, you both can do in that regard, within your respective bodies of the government there, to understand, you know, because what's happening right now is a significant amount of these dollars are going on to our local levies, in a, you know, in addition to what they're paying, people don't real, when they're paying their cellphone bill, I, if you were to do a survey of the people in Moorhead or Clay County, they probably have no clue that they're paying certain amount of dollars that basically is a tax for that purpose, and then in turn, they'll go, they wonder why property taxes are going up, because we have to fund the Triple RDC and these things, and, you know, so it's, I think it's worth a, a lot of conversation to improve on that system and what goes back to the counties, thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I appreciate you guys coming in today, this is, really, we, we just finished the legislative session that's going to require a lot of work to fine-tune, the fire hose pushed a lot of things through there that need refined, and one of them, not to beat a dead horse, because both you guys have been great about working with our local law enforcement executives, the sheriff and chief Monroe, and the SRO issue. I'm not going to editorialize too much, but I was a police chief for twelve years and a cop for forty, and you cannot write legislation and expect it to be adequately trained when it takes the Attorney General and his staff, two bites of the apple, to vaguely allude to what this thing means. You've got an SRO in a, in a school full of kids, and when things go south, they got maybe a second to figure it out, and if they aren't trained to be responsive in the way that the law requires them to, and where it just comes naturally, and if the rules aren't understood, I think both of you guys are on page with it from what I've read in the paper, we need to sit down and tune this thing up to where it makes sense. My opinion is police use of force is pretty clearly defined as, outside the education funding bill, and, you know, there needs to be work done on that, and that, I will not expect you guys, unless you want to, to respond to that, because both of you have, and it's bipartisan, and I'm grateful for that, and I know, at times, that puts you under a little heat, and I appreciate that you're willing to take that, to come and talk to the chief and talk to the sheriff, and try and figure, and the school officials, and try and figure things out. The other thing I want to make you aware is probably not going to be in the legislative cards this year, because of the same issue, but statute four oh three controls emergency broadcast, or emergency communications in the state of Minnesota is fifteen years old. It predates next generation nine-one-one, it predates the huge use of cellular communication. When it was written, ninety-five percent of the calls that came into dispatch centers came in on hardwire. The vendors, the providers of hardwire services, were paid five million dollars a year to send that signal into the nine-one-one system in a manner with your proper attachments to get an address back in, so that it comes up with an address on the screen. Right now, five percent of the calls that come in are hardwire, they still get five million dollars, or four point five million. We spend five million on the other nine, ninety-five percent, which are VoIP or cellular, and we don't pay that four, or that five million to the providers, we pay it to a company that takes all those calls and attaches the address on it, and I'm really simplifying this, because I'm not a technical guy, but they put me on the technical committee to get this legislation ready for the legislature this year, and frankly, the providers and the lobbyists were so obstreforous and so difficult to work with, that they shut it down two weeks ago. They're hiring a third-party moderator to come in and try and get this thing, some discussion going. The three, four meetings we had were, obstreforous is a nice word I can use, and I really think we need to look at this, because federal funding is going to require our state statutes, our laws, to reflect what they're paying for, which is next generation nine-one-one, and moving into the twenty-first century on, on technology, and we are going to be out on a limb without meeting the criteria to collect millions in federal funding, if we don't get our statutes straightened out, and up to now, it's not getting through the talking stage, so that's an issue that I think, it's probably going to be another year before we can clean this thing up enough and get people talking, and hopefully, by then, the FCC is going to come in and federal legislation will make this a moot point, but that's not likely, that's possible, but not likely. And the last thing I want to talk to Senator Cubic is probably something that's near and dear to your heart, but at our AMC Fall Conference, we had a great presentation on the fact, it's, it shocked me, that we don't have emergency weather radar in about a third of our state, and that there's legislation where they're trying to get that going, and if you want to just, I think I kind of know stuff, I didn't know this stuff, and it's scary, and if you want to expand on that a little, or any of these other issues I've talked about, I'd like to hear it.
Sure, I can do the, the weather radar, because I've been involved with this group, so there is, so basically, you know, there's the Doppler radar in Mayville, and then there's one in Duluth, and there's one down in the Twin Cities, and that beam, when it leaves the Doppler radar, travels in a straight line, but the earth is curved, and so that straight line continues off into space, so the further you get away from that Doppler radar, that beam is now at an elevated height, so when you get to places, basically, if you want to line Bemidji, down through even Otter Tail County, parts of Becker County to our east, and then down into southwest Minnesota, there's a place where anything that develops closer at the surface, such as a tornado, gets missed by that Doppler radar, so Bemidji, for whatever reason, the weather gods have not looked fondly on Bemidji recently, and they've been hit with a bunch of storms that the Doppler radar has not picked up, so there is, there is a, they had the same problem out in western North Dakota, so Watford City got hit with a tornado, same thing out there, Doppler radar went- City got hit with a tornado, same thing out there, Doppler radar went above it. So the state of North Dakota put in some funds to basically fund what is a smaller Doppler radar to cover that area to see those. So in Minnesota, if we put in about three or four, it depends on whether, how much of the Arrowhead you want to include in this, there's not as many people, obviously, living up there, but for about $25 million over 20 years, we could cover those areas, which obviously, you know, lakes, there's populated areas, there's people out there in the summer, and it would cover those. It would also, particularly even for the Twin Cities, it would give them an earlier warning, too, because things disappear from the radar out here, develop there, and then suddenly pop up on the Twin Cities radar, and the storm is suddenly moving towards a large metropolitan area, much stronger than they think. So there's an advantage to basically most parts of the state. Clay County, luckily, we're, we're pretty well covered with our Doppler radar out of Mayville, but this is a huge problem for a good chunk of rural Minnesota that they are not covered well by a weather radar. So I've been in talks with the commissioners, because the, the basic thing we would need is a place to house, you know, the computer system for it. So whether DOT is the place to do that, or the, or the DNR is a place to do that, I've been talking to the commissioners, so we've kind of got a working group kind of getting together to move on this. But certainly, that's, it's, it's an issue for a large chunk of Minnesota, and good, and public safety is a big concern with it.
Well, it was, it was something that everybody kind of sat there slack-jawed when Mr. Guston, the crew, came in and presented this to us, so the public needs be aware, it's worth, worth a small matter, well, 25 million, but it's real, real money, but it's worth that.
But 25 million over 20 years is, that's actually a pretty good investment, especially in public safety.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you both for being here today. I, I do want to thank you, both Senator Kupac and Representative Joy. You both have been so accessible over the last year. I know there's been a multitude of times when an issue has bubbled up here, and it was important that we share our information and perspective to both of you, and you both are very responsive to that, so thank you very much. I encourage you, Clay County is in the process of building a regional substance abuse crisis facility that's, comes out of a, a grant that we received from the Department of Human Services, and, and really, as we look forward to how that facility can serve the region, but not only how you serve the immediate, but work with some supplemental care and services and, and therapies that we may implement there. I think it's important that we continue conversations, because it really is such a vital need for the region, but thank you. I know we've been on road tours together and facility tours and conversations quick in between sessions, so, so thank you to that. As you know, we really operate as a arm of the state, and your actions and conversations in the cities really do affect us quite drastically sometimes, so as, as much information as you can continue to filter to us, we certainly appreciate it, because as we know, it, it happens very fast in St. Paul, the conversations, and, and then the implement station, or the implementation stage for us really is a large lift sometimes, so the more we can continue to work together, the better, so thank you.
Yeah, just real quickly, again, thank you for your accessibility.
I mean, both of you, it's been, it's been good to have the numerous dialogues that we have, you know, during session and after. As part of mental health, I just want to bring that up quickly. You mentioned the 28-hour. I do want to mention, I see a couple experts in the back of the room here, as far as trying to get the state to work toward a waiver on the Medicaid for the people in, just before, you know, prosecution and that time just out of being incarcerated. Hope you're familiar with that, we need to drive it. And then also, as far as mental health itself, I think a lot of work was done toward childcare, homelessness, those things, but I think there is a bit of myths on mental health, and I hope we can reengage in that. I'd say on a local level, we are working with our ALCs right now, trying to narrow down what the, what the needs are in, in Clay County, and hopefully, can provide more information to you and that, and Representative Keeler, as we move into our next session, in defining what are the mental, mental health resources that were just in, are not adequate for this area, so, no, that'll be coming. Thank you.
Steve, did you have any?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay.
I might really briefly, sorry. I know I had my opportunity, Mr. Chair. One item that I think you both are aware of is the fingerprinting conversation. That's something, the contract with DHS is a little problematic. It's contracted with a group in Fargo, and I know the availability and, and appointment times have been confusing to not only county staff, but employees that are needing that service. Just to keep you, continue to keep you aware, we are seeking out opportunities on this side of the river to do that. The way the contract is set up, it, it equates to about a $50,000 to $60,000 annual loss to operate that on this side of the river, and I know you have those conversations when you're at the Capitol, but for Minnesota residents to need to go to North Dakota to access a service that's contracted with the Department of, Department of Minnesota is problematic. But as much as you can help us continue that conversation, that really is a vital need from childcare to employment to county services as well.
James and Mark, do you have some questions for?
I think I spoke to both Representative Joy and Senator Kupac about my concerns, but...
Okay, very good. Okay, any closing remarks that you have to make or, or want to make, excuse me?
You know how to get ahold of me. If you guys need anything, you let us know, you know. I heard a lot about this fingerprinting. I'm hearing more, you know, I'm kind of even worried with the DMV coming up here when we have the license for all coming. You know, like even kids trying to get their license at 15, 16, we got 81,000 new people coming onto the license system. Is our capacity going to be able to handle that? You know, I, I don't know what Clay, what up here has done, or what you guys are doing when this comes available, driver's license for all, but what's it looking like for us to be able to handle all that? Because I think now we're already, are we backlogged still up here for getting driver's license?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can speak a little to it, maybe not the driver's license for all, but, you know, Senator Joy, you have kids that just got their license as well, and when I went to sign my child up to get a license, the options were Alexandria and Bemidji, and they were in the middle of the day. And fortunately for my child, I had the availability and the schedule and transportation and money to pay for him to get to that test. That's not the case for all people, not only kids, but even adults, and so however you can work through that scheduling piece, I know we have a facility in, in Moorhead that offers that service, but it's oftentimes six to seven to eight months out, and that's not a service to our citizens to do that. I, I know of a lot of young folks that are getting ready to graduate that, that can't even afford to take the test because it is such a burden on them, and what does that look like for their future and for employees, employers, as employers oftentimes require that of people? So as we're talking about new government, even government, whole new unit for what you'll need to, a new department, we have departments that are so vastly understaffed that that's what the reality is, and that's a major concern.
Mr. Chair.
I, I'd also like to comment on the DMV piece. So, you know, we have the two components. There's one that's run by the county, and there's one that's run by the state. The state runs the testing piece, and I think that's the, the part that, that we at times find frustrating, and we hear from our citizens on, is the fact that they can't get a time booked, and, and they're doing exactly what Commissioner Mojo said, they're having to go to communities outside of the area, and, you know, with us being, you know, this growing community that we are, we, we should be able to have our people be able to have their testing done here. I know right now, you know, we're currently building a new DMV site, and when that's done, we're, we've designed that to have the state back in there with us. They have a current lease that they're, they're involved with, but the goal is to have them, the testing come back in as part of our DMV new, new building that we're having there. And along with that is we're, we're hopeful, you know, with the questions on the DMV, and you, you raised the question, are we backed up? On the local level, I don't think we are. We've improved our, our wait times for people, and we've done that through a combination of good, good work on, on scheduling as well as adding staff. We've gone, we've gone in and we've done our share to add the appropriate staff to cover the concerns that the county has to deal with. I, I can't say the same for the state in terms of the licensing piece. And so, so we've designed this new building, just so you're aware, and that before the state can come in, it might be three or four years, but we've designed that for them to have additional people in there to do the testing. And so then, so we're going to have to leave that up to the state to help secure that ability to do that. And every one of our, our parents with young kids who are turning the age, driving age, they're the ones who will really benefit from that.
Sure, and on that front, so this, you know, probably, you know, most citizens there don't deal with the state on a regular basis, except with the DMV, and this is, this is the thing. So I've been, I probably hear more about DMV issues than anything else. Salvage titles has also been a big problem, because the closest place has been St. Cloud to go and get that, and coming out of the pandemic with a shortage of used cars, there's been a lot more people that have been taking cars that have gone to salvage, refurbishing them and putting them back on the road, and so salvage titles have been a big problem. So I've been talking with the Department of Public Safety, they, we allocated more funds for testing and for this, and so they have a plan to open up seven to eight more places that you'll be able to get salvage titles, and so I've been stressing that, well, you know, we're like the biggest place in the western part of the state, so you should have one up here. Never mind the fact that if you live in, you know, Hallowak and you have to drive to St. Cloud to get a salvage title, that's even more ridiculous. So they are aware of that problem, so hopefully, some of the money that we have given towards them should solve this. There was also a bill in this last session to even work on moving some of the, just the driver's license testing over to some, to contract with the private entities to also do some of that contracting, to take those driver's license tests. And I think if we don't, you know, if, if the money we allocated towards more resources for to the DMV doesn't seem to work out, that might be something we'll have to just look at in the future in terms of, of doing that, to speed that process up for people, so, absolutely. And then I will just also say, you know, same thing, anytime, get ahold of me or Representative Joy, you know, we're always, we're at your beck and call.
Well, you've always been very available to us, and we appreciate that, and I know you're, some of the concerns that we expressed today, looks like you already got them in, in your mind, and, I mean, planning on working on that stuff, and appreciate that, so. We have any other further questions or comments? If not, thank you very much for being here, and... We got, we go into Mark with MOU with Clay County Rural Cities for the, you're going to have to tell me what RR RDC services are.
It's the Red River Regional Dispatch Center.
Oh, okay.
Often referred to as triple RDC.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thanks for having me here this morning. We are here to have a continuation of our MOU with our rural cities for dispatch services for our rural cities to include Holly, Delworth, Glendon, and Barnesville. As many of you are aware, and we just heard, we do have cost sharing with our rural cities for dispatch services. This is a MOU that we have had in the past. The previous MOU was for two years, this one is for three, and this also includes the maintenance, software maintenance for the computer-aided dispatch. I know myself, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Ebinger, our current county administrator, and, and County Attorney Melton, we've all met with our rural cities and discussed issues and concerns with them, and we're aware of them, and we'll work towards some solutions moving forward.
Okay. I just want to thank you, Sheriff, for being the tip of the spear on what's been kind of a contentious issue with a couple of the communities, rightly so. Nobody likes to put this on, on their levy, and as we've discussed, if 911 fees can be brought in line, and Representative Joy is looking at that hard and coming up with some good information, this will take the burden off the county and these communities, but right now, with what we've got, I appreciate you, and I appreciate the mayors and the councils in these communities for coming up with funding to keep us operational. We have an amazing dispatch center right now, and it's going to be even better when we get the new facility built, so, but it's not cheap.
No, it's not.
No.
Thank you.
I guess I'm surprised when I look at the Cass County, looking at 18% and Clay County 15%, you know, I don't know. I guess I just expected Clay County to be a little bit larger than, or much larger than, not much larger than Clay County, but they're just a little bit, only 3% higher. I mean...
I think for, for that, Moorhead is included, they have their own MOU with dispatch, so that would be the reason for that difference, is that Moorhead does their own, and then we have our own, as you can see there, Moorhead's at 17%.
And West Fargo and Fargo are paying their share in what's left over in Cass counties, the rural areas and...
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, move the MOU.
Second.
We got a motion, a second to approve the MOU with the Red River Dispatch. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to approve for the MOU with Clay County and Rural City, excuse me, with the Contract Addendum, Solutions Behavioral Healthcare Professionals.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Here today to request just an attach an addendum to the current contract that Clay County Social Services already has with Solutions Behavioral Health. I'm just looking to kind of hook into that with an addendum for the juvenile center purposes to purchase chemical dependency services from them, so chemical dependency therapist, behavioral health, if we, if we need that service solution so that they could provide it for us, and right now, we're in desperate need of a...
Where are we getting the services from now?
Um, Luther and Social Services was providing our chemical dependency services. They're done this month. With that, their, their therapist quit or moved on, I don't know, but either way, they couldn't guarantee us one, and we need somebody, and Solutions said that they can, they can do that for us, and it's very critical, because, you know, we got kids in our care, and I'm not going to let them miss a beat.
Very good, okay. Any further questions?
I appreciate your attendance to this, so we don't have a break, so I'll request the approval to the Contract Addendum and for the appropriate people to sign the contract with Solutions Behavioral Healthcare.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to the MOU. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, request approval of Minnesota Department of Public Safety grant award.
Thank you. So, good morning. The Clay County Attorney's Office, through Victim Services, did write for and was approved for grant funding to help support victim services. That funding incorporates reimbursement for personnel, including salary and, and fringe benefits. It does also help support travel and training costs for our program... That funding incorporates reimbursement for personnel, including salary and fringe benefits. It does also help support travel and training costs for our program and our staff. We also receive some program and office expenses and direct client assistance. And those direct client assistance are dollars that we can use to actually directly help victims of crimes if they are out financially. And so that's another benefit to having that grant award is we get some opportunities to be able to directly help someone who's been, again, on the out of pocket expenses for, for the crime that they were a victim of. So this is just a yearly grant award that we received. We've been having this type of funding since I've been here and prior to that. So I think over 20 years of Office of Justice programs funding for, for support of victim services.
So you're saying that if someone commits a crime, we're going to help them defend themselves, huh?
Nope, if somebody commits a crime, we're going to help the victim that they harmed.
Or the victim.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Missed that word, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
All right, any further?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion, a second to approve this motion, accept the MOU, or excuse me, yeah.
Grant.
Grants, excuse me, for, this grant is for $70,000, right?
Yes, that's correct, for one year.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion?
Has this, was this incorporated into the budget, the county attorney's budget?
Yes, we didn't know the total. I did write for more than what we were awarded. They had some additional funds put out there, so I did try to get more funding than what we were awarded. This is similar to what we received in prior years. I was trying to go for an increase. I think I'll continue to try to do that, just with some of our, our needs and the increase that we're seeing. But yeah, it should be, have been incorporated in the budget that Brian proposed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next thing is request approval to nominate Commissioner Campbell to the Lakes County Service Cooperative Order of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe you said it all. Mr. Campbell, or Commissioner Campbell has, has provided, provided services as part of their, their commission or their board for the last number of years. His term is up this year and in talking with Commissioner Campbell, he's expressed interest of continuing that starting February 1st of 2024.
Okay, since he doesn't have much to do.
Mr. Chair, I think it's been valuable to have Commissioner Campbell on that and with, with that company will make a motion to approve the reappointment.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the appointment.
Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify something, this is, this is basically like serves as a nomination form. That position, it still is, it's an elected position by the full membership of Lakes County Service Cooperative. And I think that, that once nominated, I think that, I believe that ballot goes out in November, November, December. So this doesn't guarantee a position, but it just serves as a nomination.
Well, appreciate you getting yourself nominated. Okay, we got a motion to approve nomination, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next thing is, you gonna have an excellent justice or?
Mr. Chair, would you be willing to take the addition?
You assess the positions, if you want to do.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd be willing to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As this board recalls, we recently were notified that, that Nancy Gunderson is going to be retiring in December and we moved forward this past Tuesday with, with interviews for prospective county assessors. The hire, the, after the interview process, the hiring committee is recommending that Jill Murray be hired as the next Clay County Assessor. If the board approves, she would be looking to start November 20th of 2023, allowing some overlap to spend time with Nancy. Ms. Murray has a lengthy history. She's currently the Norman County Assessor. She's also worked in Polk County and also has been a deputy assessor for the city of Moorhead. And so we're, we're very fortunate to have someone with the experience. I think from a personality standpoint, she's going to fit extremely well into, into our culture. Ms. Murray did request as part of that, because of her experience, that, that we hire her at step six and also provide an additional or front load 40 hours of vacation and sick, 40 hours of sick. This has been a practice that with department heads or board, a board has taken under consideration previously. And with that, I'd yield some questions.
Yes, I was part of the interview team on this and Steve, you pointed out a couple factors I really think are important and we consider. And one is that assessor is one of the more difficult positions the counties are having throughout the state and filling. And frankly, the applicant pool would be build your own assessor from somebody who's got less experience than most of the members of our staff until we get to this candidate and she knows her stuff, she's got experience. I think it's just a great pick. And in light of that, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Jill Murray for approval to the appointment of Clay County Assessor.
And I'll second.
We got a motion, a second.
And I, if I may, quickly, just so you talked about, her personality is, is, over my years as a real estate agent, I've called upon her up in Norman and, and other times and she's very accommodating. She's got a great voice, you know, in communications to the people. So as you've already mentioned, Commissioner Ebinger, I think she'd be a great pick.
Any other comments, questions? Are you all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Host, very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Is Justin here? Yeah, Justin's here, okay. We'll move on to approval of the final contract for 014594001, okay.
Yes, good morning.
Which is the Seventh Street Project in Dilworth.
Yes, so I'm requesting approval of the final contract voucher for SAP 14594001. So this was the LRIP project on Seventh Street in Dilworth. We were the project sponsor. There was no county funds on this project. We were just the sponsor as they received a grant from the state. So the final amount to be approved is $5,620,969.52. The contractor was Celine Brothers and I thought the project turned out really well. And this final contract voucher was approved last night at the Dilworth City Council meeting.
As living in Dilworth, I have to agree with you, it was a very good project and turned out very nice.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the, of the final voucher.
Second.
We got a motion, a second to approve the, approve the contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Host, very good, very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing is request approval for grant funds for Fargo-Moorhead Wellness and Healthcare Promotion Projects. Roy and Kathy, I'm sure Kathy will take this.
Wait, let's flip. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We're just presenting this grant funds because it was not initially, we usually at the beginning of the year, provide all the grant funds that we're going to receive for the year and this one came up later. So we're here to request approval of grant funds that will be used for the FM area for the FM Wellness Coalition in the community and Rory can speak a little bit about that in a minute. It's $50,000 and we would be the fiscal manager of that grant fund and it goes from October this month through September of next year, so just a year for the, this grant.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about this grant or?
Yeah, Clay County is part of the FM Wellness Coalition and the group spent a significant amount of time trying to determine what could be done. Initially, there were some funding opportunities through the state of North Dakota around this, if you're familiar with the term blue zones, places around the world where people have been shown to live longer. And the state of North Dakota had some funding to do work to address and to try to create blue zone environments in Fargo-Moorhead. And I've got good relationships with those partners. They invited me to be part of it. And so we have some initial funding and the group asked if Clay County would, looked for, sought some, one of the partners to be a fiscal host for this. And so the partners are Sanford Ascencia, United Way, Blue Cross, Blue Shield of North Dakota, Family Healthcare and Fargo-Cass Public Health. And then the two public health agencies are moving forward as the leads and so we're asking to be the fiscal host for the work that's starting. And then there's an opportunity to renew that funding again next year and we'll continue to seek additional funding.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, kudos to you there Rory, you're exceptional in what you do and, and I'm sure that getting this grant and, and being able to facilitate is right in the middle, you're well housed all the way. So I just always appreciate what you do. It's, it's fun for you to mention the word blue zones. I'm watching those on Netflix. They're very interesting and, and you know, it, it just reminds us over and over, you know, the mental health, all the good aspects of good food and nutrition and whether that's for production, we all operate better and, you know, we're just better people and what we do when we're eating well and we feel well. So appreciate it. So I'll make a motion, we approve the funding for the wellness and the health promotion projects.
Okay, we got a motion for the approve, the grant.
Second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I'll leave the contract that needs to have your signature in two spots. I'll leave it with Jackie to track you down at the end of the meeting.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing is to request approval, they'll come on.
Naloxone.
Thank you. Access point to provide training and distribution of naloxone and fentanyl test kits to the public.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove. So we're excited to introduce a new team member. So Annabelle De Fault joined us at the end of August to be our opioid program coordinator. She comes to Clay County from Fargo-Cass Public Health where she was their tobacco coordinator, did lots of education around the community and we are very fortunate. And in that month that she's been here, a little over a month, have been meeting extensively with community partners to try to identify needs, what it is we can do with her time, what other funding we might be seeking from external sources. And we have our first update and we need an approval. And so Annabelle's going to give you the details of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, thank you. And Commissioners, my name, like Rory said, is Annabelle De Fault. Started in this role about six weeks ago and since you're being introduced with our request today to a little bit of my work, I just want to introduce myself, give a brief overview of what we're requesting and answer any questions you might have. So we're requesting to become what's called a naloxone access point. Naloxone, if you're not familiar with that term, is the term you may hear the brand name Narcan, same thing, naloxone is the drug. So to become a naloxone access point through the Steve Rummler Hope Network is what we are trying to do. And what this would mean is that the Steve Rummler Hope Network would send us a supply of naloxone and fentanyl test strip kits. And once we receive that supply, we could then distribute that to the public. I, along with other community partners, see this as a big priority for our community. We know that research tells us communities that have increased access to naloxone and access to overdose response education see a decrease in their overall overdose deaths in the community. So see this as a critical component, just one piece of the puzzle to combating the opioid crisis. So what this distribution could look like for the community or for us right now, what our plan would be, is part of my work plan includes implementing trainings throughout the community that focus on opioid overdose response and administration of naloxone. So those community trainings will be done with a variety of groups. The goal is to really get as many community members as possible trained. We know that overdose and substance use disorders in general don't discriminate. We can see them in many populations and overdoses can occur really anywhere in the community and we've seen that firsthand in Moorhead. So our goal would be to train really anybody, like I said, but thinking of shelter staff, school staff, jail staff, any community members who are interested, bar staff, private businesses, people like that. And so since we'd be giving them the knowledge and skills, I would think this is a great opportunity to give them naloxone as well so that they actually have the means to apply what they'd be learning in that training, bring that out in the community. My hope is that community members start to see naloxone as a extra layer of protection, kind of like how we see an EpiPen or an AED. You hope you never have to use it, but when the situation arises where you do, it's there, you know how to use it and can potentially save a life. So that is our, the current distribution plan, since this is right now the only access we have to free naloxone. That may change in the future, which might shift this a little bit. And more of those options for other free naloxone is detailed in my overall work plan and I'd be happy to come back at a later date and discuss that further. Thank you.
How long does a person have, say you take an overdose, how long do you have a person have to administer this?
It's, the sooner the better, ideally within the first few minutes after an overdose.
So it is sort of important to have that out there.
Yes, very much so.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Your position has been needed for a long time and I'm glad that we're filling it. The response with, with naloxone has been misrepresented on our side of the river. There's been untrue speculation that the law enforcement agencies and fire services have not had it onboard, they do. But we've got to take it to the next step as, as much fentanyl is coming into the, just like everywhere in the state and in the country, fentanyl is coming into the drug supply. You've got people who are using it that don't anticipate the results and having this out without having to wait for a 911 response, I think is imperative. And what a lot of people don't realize is one dose is very often not enough. The, with fentanyl, the potency is such that it outlasts the efficacy of the, of the naloxone. And when naloxone stops working, they just go right back into overdose mode. So people out in the public who are counting on one shot of naloxone to do it and not calling emergency services when this happens, are still putting, putting the person that's overdosing at risk. This is information you're going to be able to get out and we're grateful to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Is there an expiration date on this?
As far as naloxone expiration date, it is good for three years. It can be used after that, but FDA recommends that three year mark.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you and welcome. Commissioner Ebinger mentioned that there's some that don't anticipate the results of, of what's going on and, and it's nice to have this available. I guess my, another thing that I'd be interested in is there's also some that do anticipate the results and that's alarming and that's a real concern. That's for those who want to take their life for whatever reason. And, you know, obviously this is an opportunity to take them out of that immediate judgment for whatever purpose that they're, they're doing. My, right now, if it's done, for example, if that particular, in any case, you know, if it's law enforcement or somebody applying this or medical, that's the step in, right, right, right up front. And. front in reviving them. But at some point, how are we being able to use that moment in their time to help them find resources so that it doesn't occur again? And so it seems to me that, you know, if you have somebody off the street doing this, certainly it's important at the moment. But how do, what's the process for that to be a learning experience where they can be able to say, well, here, this is a, here's a place for you to maybe go? Do you understand what I'm asking here?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. I agree with you. That is definitely something that's kind of a gap currently, based on my understanding of the current processes. So far, there really isn't a person or a process in place to kind of follow up with someone after an overdose. That is something I've been discussing with Fargo-CAS Public Health and asking them for a little bit of guidance on what they do. And they have a few proposed plans for that. So that is something that I hope to address in the future by working with them a little bit on that.
Well, thank you. I guess I just, you know, supposing this happens in a bar, and you have a bartender who's, has the training, the expertise, and has it on him, and he can correct, you know, he can help solve the issue right there. Does everybody just go home and call it a day then? Or, you know, how does somebody help them say, well, you know, there's better choices and better opportunities for help? That's what I'm...
Thank you, Commissioner. I think another thing to acknowledge in that scenario as well is that oftentimes, if somebody is given naloxone for an overdose, when that person comes to a bit, they are generally not in a state where they're able to kind of take in that information. Oftentimes, once that naloxone kicks in, they are starting to go through opioid withdrawal, which can result in a lot of confusion and not necessarily the time where they're able to receive that information. So I think it's a really critical step in the process to have follow-up after an overdose with somebody. I don't think it'll end up looking like an immediate result with somebody on scene, but I think it'll be a really critical component moving forward.
That's what I was referring to, is the follow-up. And obviously, you're not going to talk to them 15 minutes later and say, okay, here's. But there should be a method in there that allows for some sort of follow-up.
And so maybe if I could add two things, we have met with First Link, who right there, the repository of all of these resources to heighten their awareness of this need. And they are digging deeper to see if they can find an easy way to kind of query their big database to make sure that the resources that do exist are easily accessible or at least findable. So that's part of it. And I would say, as a result of one of our early conversations, local law enforcement has already been in contact with Annabelle regarding specific cases. And we're now trying to problem-solve to figure out, all right, what do we need to do? Who do we need to bring together to make sure that we know who the people are and that they can get some help, or we can at least offer it? And so that's a gap that we're hoping to help fill.
A point. I qualified last night for the annual retired law enforcement firearms qualification. And Lieutenant Detloff, Moorhead Police Department, told me exactly what, he said, he's getting the overdose reports to Annabelle. And I said, really? He said, yeah. That is integral. It's been years in getting that information to where it can be tracked down and measured. And certainly overdoses reported law enforcement, even reported emergency medical services, aren't covering the entire spectrum of what's going on out there, but it's an indicator. And we haven't had that on board. So your name was mentioned at the Moorhead Police Department Pistol Range last night, and they were quite proud that they're actually tracking this stuff now and getting it to you.
What, going out and getting people trained on this, what if someone doesn't want to do it in their facility or something like that? Bar owner says, I don't want to be responsible for administering this. Do they have an option?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's definitely an optional training. It's not something that would be forced upon anybody. Based off of how Fargo-CAS has done this and had a lot of success, they are approached by community groups that want to do this training. So while we may go into some places or offer that to people and say it's available, it's never something that's forced in terms of being part of their policy that they would have to do it. If they choose to do that, which maybe in the future, that could be an opportunity for businesses to have this as part of kind of their safety protocol. But as of right now, it is an optional training for community members to do as they would like.
How long of a training is this for?
The training will be about 45 minutes to an hour.
Okay. I was just thinking about turnover in a business space. Turnover, do we keep on? New people has to come on, or it's just owner-trained or?
Well, the hope is to do that initial training, but then to have, to ask and to prompt and to maybe nudge to ask about systematic training. So maybe they're going to build it into a policy or protocol so that it wouldn't be dependent on any one staff or leader choosing to do so. But, so there'll be a training and education piece, but also a request for organizations to consider how to systematically build it into their culture.
Are we going to be doing all the training? I mean, are you responsible for doing all the training then or?
Yes, I will be the one doing the training.
Got a big job ahead of you.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we become a naloxone access point for distribution of naloxone and fentanyl test strips to the public.
Okay.
Let me make a second.
We've got a motion, a second, to become a distributor.
Have a comment, or an ask, if I can. Yeah. So again, welcome. We've been waiting for you. And I appreciate the comments that Commissioner Campbell made. I think were some of the early discussions that we had in our committee, you know, what is that follow-up? Certainly, there's nonprofits already that try to attach those dots in crisis response. I think helps a lot with that. But your connection with First Link, that is key. The question I had was, this funding right now is a free source coming into, and I'm just curious, not familiar with this Steve Rummel Hope Network, but is there, do you see this as, is there something behind it that shows it will be free to Clay County for a number of years? Or, I mean, do we know what's behind this group?
Yes, thank you for the question, Commissioner. There are other naloxone access points in the community. There are a few within Clay County. And to my knowledge, that has always been free, and they advertise the service as a free supply of naloxone and fentanyl test strip kits. So I don't foresee that changing in the future. However, I am already exploring other means of free Narcan, or naloxone, I should say, in the community. So there are a few other methods that we can explore in the future if this is not a sustainable option.
Okay. Because I know the product itself is somewhat expensive. I think, as you mentioned, what, $44 or something? So for a user, you know, what's the choice, right?
Definitely. Yes, it is available over the counter now. So you get two doses for $44.99, which is great that there's increased access to the product. However, we know that the price is a major barrier for a lot of people, especially when we think of the fact that those who are low income are disproportionately impacted by substance use disorder. So it's certainly a barrier, and I would like to explore as many free options as possible for people.
Thank you for that.
They can afford the drug, but they can't afford the naloxone. Okay, very good. Okay, we've got a motion on board to become approval for naloxone access and distribution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most, very good.
Maybe Annabelle, again, welcome. And she has literally hit the ground running. Many positive comments, as has been shared. If people want to get ahold of you now that the board has approved that, what would be the best way to reach out to you?
By email or phone. I'm sorry, I don't know my phone number off the top of my head. Six weeks in, that's one of the things I'm missing. But yes, email or phone, contact Clay County Public Health, and they will get you in touch with me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We've had a request for a short break. So we'll take a short break. Kind of going to committee reports. Kevin, you want to start it out today?
Mr. Chair, my only meeting last week was on Monday, which I already reported, so I have nothing else to report, with the exception of I'd like to just say, go Twins.
We'll take that into consideration. Okay, Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll have to also go Twins. 3:00 today?
3:00.
Hope they keep plugging. Last week, Tuesday, on the 3rd, I participated in these assessor interviews, which were successful. And I want to thank Aaron and Steve for giving us a process that worked, and we located a good and competent successor for Nancy. On Thursday, I participated in a remote legislative, the emergency communication legislative meeting. We spent a lot of time on that with a report from Sandy Stroud with the Department of Public Safety regarding the 403 work group, which I've already covered in previous reports. Looks like for at least the next 90 days, we're going to be going through a state process to hire a third-party facilitator who can maybe bring the discussion further ahead. But right now, we do not anticipate this legislation getting on 2024. It'll be 2025 before we can work through the boondoggle that's occurred. Monday, participated with Commissioner Krabinoff, Jason McCoy, Kathy McKay, and Rory Bell, and Steve on the, discussing the cannabis ordinance and tobacco ordinances that we've got. First part of the meeting involved a tobacco ordinance update, talking about flavored tobaccos, flavored cigars, and some of the vape, and then a new product called Zen, which is nicotine in a pill, which is just amazing to me, but apparently it's out there. There's going to be a submission by Jason and Public Health of a review of our current tobacco ordinance. And I don't want to go too far down the road on this. They will come in and explain the details. I took a lot of notes, but I'm not 100% sure that this is ready for public consumption now or consumption with the commission until we have the ordinance in writing and everybody can look at the specifics of it. I don't want to take five minutes of your time explaining what we covered, just find out I got it wrong. The cannabis, it's the same thing. We're looking at, although it's legal to possess and use, it won't be legal to sell or produce for commercial use until 2025. And we've got edibles to work in on that. And how many retail establishments can be in the county? And that's really going to take us communicating with the municipals, municipalities in this county, all of them, and find out what they want to do and what they want us to do. And we discussed that with Mr. Larson, and we're going to reach out and try to get an idea with our municipal governments, whether they want us to handle the administration of this, or they want to do it. You've got to get feedback from everybody to get an idea how many licenses are going to be available within the county. And happily, we have a little time before we have to get there. So there's been preliminary work done on getting the cannabis ordinance together. And I think key to that is finding out what the municipal governments in our county want. And that's not a collective thing. Everybody from Downer to Dilworth are going to have to give us an idea of where they want to go and what they want us to handle on this before we know what our responsibility is going to be. And again, that's going to be, hopefully in the near future, we'll be able to get a briefing from our public health people. I don't want to look at my notes and give some misinformation and just muddy the waters more than the state of Minnesota has. So we'll proceed on that, hopefully, in the near future. And that completes my report.
Paul?
So back to last Tuesday, more continued work with the Clay Extension Service. They've had positions open up for educator, which we've been able to fill. We also had a change with our front office as far as first-hand handling office and administrative duties. Those positions, they're being filled and taken care of. And then we have one left that we're starting that process of interviewing, starting sometime within the week, and that'll be the replacement for what Randy Nelson was with the Extension Service regarding agriculture and horticulture. So those were parts of those meetings. Seems we're having a dialogue almost every day on that. The next was on Thursday, on the 5th, part of my adult mental health LAC. And to me, this was one of the better meetings we'd had. And we had First Link come in and do a kind of a deep dive for us in what they do. And very impressive work, I have to say. And just learning about, you know, their two pieces. They have the 211, which is your, you know, your information referral network for people of all sorts of questions regarding to whether it's mental health or just general medical help, a referral under that number. And then, of course, we have our two, or excuse me, 988, the suicide and crisis lifeline that they handle. Anyway, just to give you a feel, the number of calls that came into First Link, and First Link is North Dakota and Clay County, so that's the coverage. And in 2022, they had 86,000 calls. And this year, already in 2022, well, the estimate for 2023 is 100,000. So that's a lot. And then kudos to all the work. You know, we talked about those two pieces, 211 and 988, and then it's, what's the length in with 911? And great things were said about the Red River Dispatch Center, that coordination between 911, getting back to 988, seems to be very seamless and very little wait time for the people on those lines. And so, anyway, very impressed with their work. And with this, one of the reasons we had them in, I mentioned mental health to, you know, our legislators earlier. Part of the discussion through the LACs, whether it's adult or mental health, is the fact that we need to, we're trying to assess what is the need of Clay County? What are, you know, what are we responding to? Are we meeting, where are gaps that we talk about? And what more do we need to be aware of so that we can have enough data to be going to our representatives? And if it means more in the way of treatment facilities or whatever the case, we're able to have something to build upon for an ask. So Representative Keeler has come to us a couple times now in the way of mental health, and being that's part of her portfolio, you know, down at legislature. So I appreciate her getting the conversations going and... So I appreciate her getting the conversations going and we'll see what things we can find along with that. So it was a very engaging meeting that we had. Then I'll come to yesterday and Commissioner Ebger gave a very good report there on, with the substance abuse in, as far as ordinances, potential ordinances and what they may look like down the road on tobacco or cannabis. So I don't need to say more than that. And then last night, I went, I went to the Buffalo Red Watershed District, just a couple things on that. So once again, a new project coming forward having to do with Clay County ditch 34, starting right on Highway Two, right on the edge of, County Road Two, right on the edge of Barnesville. Kind of going up in strings along for about six miles is the first phase, coming down to County 21 and this intersection that we had trouble with last spring with flooding. Anyway, those areas, there's been preliminary work done. And last night, it was approved that they will now move forward with that, that, that phase, creating a project design and then also creating an EAW, environmental assessment worksheet, which then will give public notice and other things to start working toward a project. So if, if all goes forward correctly, it is a possible start in 2025. So for Clay County with the Buffalo Red, we have a couple projects now then that are moving along. And one of them being Project Katie on the Stony Creek, and then this one would be more the Whiskey Creek. So, which then goes into the south branch of the Buffalo. And then the other thing I just want to mention is, we've been, we've had three viewers helping the watershed for years and years and years and years. And, and, and we put out, or they put out a call for interviewers' applications. And they did receive seven applications. So they're going to be in touch with those applicants and they're going to start interviews and potentially some training. And those viewers, their purpose is again, for areas where we, we're having projects, be able to help with the assessment. So everything's fairly equitable all in those areas and where we really need to focus our projects and how to phase them. So anyway, it's an integral piece with working with the watershed. And that completes my report.
Okay. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended the discussion regarding extension staffing and needs in relation to what their strategic vision for this, the programming needs are in Clay County. The following day, I attended the AMC Extension Committee meeting. That meeting was brought about to discuss the MOU with the extension that will be expiring 2024 is the last year of that agreement. So as you recall, we typically bring county commissioners that serve on the state extension committee and an administrator or two to craft what the vision and needs are in relation to what counties are seeing and then discuss the agreed costs that the counties will negotiate. Excuse me. We also discussed the county extension committee membership, making sure that there's a position description for new members as they attend so they understand the scope and, and size of what that commitment is. And I also attended the Buffalo Red River Watershed District meeting last night. There were long discussions on many projects and I appreciate the discussion on the upper Buffalo River restoration project that really is something that stemmed from feedback from not only the county, but also residents along that area. Certainly, there will be a long discussion on permitting and land acquisitions. There will be a meeting November 13th at 5:00 PM at the watershed office that residents can attend. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. This is my meeting, not necess, oh, excuse me. Tuesday afternoon, not necessarily a meeting, but with interviews for the assessors, which we discussed today. On Wednesday afternoon, we had a meeting, I don't know whether you want to call it a planning commission meeting, whatever, but of several different entities, the watershed board, Houston Engineering and a couple others, some property in Clay County and Mullen Township. Involved, there's some property that their, their main bank maybe is falling and that their septic system is going to have a problem. And I don't know, there's just no funds available to help homeowners out on that. But we're going to start looking for some funds or put a request in for some funds. And in the meantime, we'll keep looking around for, to help these neighbors out. The only other thing I got there is also I saw the MCIT bulletin that there's a deadline for CHILCAMR grant applications. I don't know if we've done that yet or not. I think the deadline is October 15th. It's coming pretty close. So I don't know if we put in for that grant or not, but that is something we should look into. Other than that, Steve, you got something?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the assessor interviews. Thank you to the board for their support in, in bringing Ms. Murray to us. I think she'll be, as I mentioned, she'll be a great addition. We will have to do an oath of office as part of her position. Also, then here after the meeting, I'll reach out to the Department of Revenue as they have to sign off on, on the hire also. On the fourth through the sixth, I attended the MACA and the Macrame Association Conference at North Brainerd. We talked about the, the first look, I guess, at the potential legislative platforms that we discussed at policy. And again, we'll be discussing at district meetings, bringing forward which, what are our priorities. We talked about legislative changes and implementation, specifically with cannabis, safe and sick time, family leave. We also talked about the different workforce challenges that all of the counties are, are being faced with. Again, just want to appreciate the board's commitment in allowing me to attend these different conferences. They're extremely beneficial. Participated on the ninth at the tobacco ordinance update that we've had the discussion on again. Commissioner Ebger spoke about, just a reminder, we have an ordinance already that, that Mr. McCoy is looking at the possibility of just making some adjustments. A lot of those are, some of those pertain to, to changes that have happened through state statute. The other piece is the cannabis discussion I did with our upcoming rural cities meeting next week. I did invite Mr. McCoy just to provide a brief update to our group. He has been reaching out already to, to our rural communities at my request. And so I thought it might be a good opportunity at that meeting to, to get some feedback from our, from our rural cities. Yesterday, I did also had a conversation with Dan Molly on a series of shared issues between the county and city of Moorhead. We're going to be opening bids this afternoon for the DMV project, anticipating bringing that before the full commission next week. Unbelievably, we're also at the time with a resource recovery of our 11-month warranty. We've been open almost a year. And so we're going to be working with construction engineers to make sure that everything is in order there as we get close to closing out that project. And next week, we will also be continuing our legislative updates with Representative Keeler will be here. And that concludes my report.
Mike, you got anything else?
Mr. Melton finds himself in a trial this morning, so he sent me up. He sends his regards, but no report.
Okay, thank you for being here. Darren, you got anything? Very good. Jackie Scott's got something.
Thank you. So I have been in communication with the committee administrator for the Human Services Policy Committee with regards to reserving some rooms for a couple events on Monday next week. There will be a community conversation with Representative Keeler and the Minnesota House Human Services Policy Committee, which will be held here at the courthouse in this meeting room, meeting rooms AMB, on Monday, October 16th, from 1:00 to 3:00. And then shortly after that, there will be a committee hearing with Representative Keeler and the Minnesota House Human Services Policy Committee. Again, that will be here from 3:30 to 5:00 PM, meeting rooms AMB. And I can send you all an email after the meeting, kind of giving you all the details.
Okay, this is something we have to, if everybody comes.
Yep. And I have posted, yep.
Okay, that's been posted?
Yep.
Very good. Okay. Your turn.